Good evening. If you want to speak, we have speaker cards in the back. Public participation. I do have two cards. Want to speak or anything on the agenda, you need to mark a card. We only have one item. You wanna speak, please fill out a card. Thank you. We're gonna get started in just about a minute.
Sir, are you looking at asking for a card? Yeah, we have. I have. Yes, sir.
Evening. It's six o'clock. It's six o'clock and we are gonna start our meeting here at City Hall. Please join me in flag of leaders.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hope.
Here.
Councilman Kellum. Here. Councilman Morrison. Mayor Proton Raymond. Here.
Our first item is we're gonna need a motion to remove items four and five from public hearing because of legal advertising.
Mayor, move that we remove items number four and five from the unit.
I second it.
Do we have a motion to remove items four and five from the agenda?
Councilman Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hope.
Four.
Councilman Kellum. Four. Councilman Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Proton Raymond. Four.
Okay, we're going into the public participation of speaker cards. I've got two. The first one that I received was from a marksman. Comes in a microphone, please, sir, and state your name. Your name, please. And you're here to talk about Cine Beach or North Side of the Road.
So, uh, I'm running a little bit late. I'm not like all the time, but now that it's pretty sure of each. And these peacocks are official two thousand and five. Let's see, most of them are home to two thousand and nine. These things are, I can agree, I mean, he moved this way. A friend that lived in the neighborhood, Southern California. Once they get to a tipping point, it's gonna get crazy and it's almost terrible. I was right in there. There was like ten of them. Three of them is, I don't know, that's like, look, ten of them, if I had to split. I mean, it's, uh, it's something that I think would probably get some sanctuaries taken. I'm just being cool to him or any man, but you know, maybe. He did, he, their victims, they wouldn't multiply. This is a lot of people. And, uh, I think they're happy and I think there's a lot of people abusing them as well. Kids and people are just like that, so give them the same choice tomorrow. I, it's perfect. You know, I'm gonna do what I can, you know. Kind of people, people in cities that see them, you can see it coming. I mean, they can both find them on the way. So I'm suggesting we need something to get them to do. A survey, sort of, with who is, and who's out there, maybe what we could do to replace them. What sanctuary, they take your better care, they have a good life, it's less. You know, just trying to figure it out and see what goes. That only we're having now.
Well, we can't take any action with the staff that's there listening and we listen, but it's been a problem for years.
Right.
Some people love it, some people don't, so it's something that's.
That's where, that's just certainly, I mean, seeing what people are saying.
Well, that would be something that maybe.
An idea for a step. I didn't have any. They're running through traffic. That's gotta be a rough life. Maybe, you know, they just, they can't really go though. There's a cool game, they're too, like, they use it.
But we can't take any action on it tonight. I'm in public, it's just a thing we like. We have a question for you, sir. And then the count, the last three years of possible.
You let, there's a new place to start, I think. You know, it's kind of getting very, kind of growing, it's hard. Never mind, the laws, the, the items that are the A's. And the N's, maybe, okay, with the N's, I'll try to, try to do something to, to the other. We're gonna, you know, place in the sanctuary and we're really be happy to take it here on all of that. You know, I keep playing a trick.
Like I say, we can't do anything about it tonight, but we are already listening. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. And surely thank you for this input. Um, your real answer?
Yeah. My name is Steve Lawery. One fact, I live in Parker House, which is sort of at the center of the peacocks. Just to follow up on this comment, which is actually, I don't know. The Parker National Resources or whatever, or the Department's call. They, period, I was kind of in the past called the Flock. Been a while, and, and, uh, I was actually gonna mention that, but then in my, my, my. The staff that's trying to act to stay, and they have programs, uh, already in progress where they think of the sanctuaries. Everything they're showing the best for has been done before. It's just a matter of are they ready to do it now? Have they not gotten around to the city approach or something? I think, I think we might have success. But anyway, by my, uh, about peacocks. Uh, the, the, the biggest problem with the traffic related to peacocks is the bird chirping. Right around Harvard Park, and I know you probably experienced the same thing. For some reason, people think birds are magic, you know. They don't stop for a spurt, but they'll stop for peacocks. They won't stop for anything except peacocks. And I would like to suggest we have signage on both sides of four-way stop. If it's some distance, uh, you wanna read it from either direction, say, um, please slow, don't stop for peacocks. Or whatever would be sufficient up at the traffic center. Because people stop in the middle of traffic or they stop four-way. And they are teed traffic, which is actually illegal. Uh, whereas you just got a ten mile an hour, but you get a car. I mean, I live in Harvard Park, I'm about through them all the time. Just slow down to ten, fifteen miles an hour, but you know, that's not a problem. But it's, it's, and people may report to the area, one or another. And if we have a, uh, uh, the signage, at least you can point to the sign and say, this is why I'm such a good person. Sorry, you go, I'm gonna cancel. And, you know, it's, it's, it creates changes which don't need traffic. So there's a lot of good reasons for it. And, and within the, or called the flock. They'll diminish the problems, well, something that would help the people found it more than it obviously gives the idea. Oh, it's okay, you're absolutely kidding. Right, Mr.? This is all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we continue on, I have to go back to public participation. I did, I have pandemic, if I may, to read on public participation. During the COVID nineteen pandemic proceedings, both virtually and personally, in person and virtually. As a courtesy to all attendants, this meeting should last till about eight o'clock. Beyond, the sharp recess will be called at that time if we need it. The public is recorded. All speakers, please get clearly into the microphones. And in order for your voices to be recorded. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during this meeting, during the public participation portion of the meeting, click on the hand icon on the upper right and corner your screen, unmute your microphone. And when you're called upon, staff will unmute you, divide you to that you are live. You will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and residence and use proper decor. The council may choose to respond to your comment or move on to the next comment. Take your control, have it heard. Staff will only be monitoring the race in front. Okay, we don't have any more comments from the audience. So I'm gonna go to public participation on the network. Uh, Molly, do you have somebody after?
Mayor Hope, we do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, we was both public participating. We don't have anybody in audience that wants to speak. Okay, we'll bring you back to the dice. And then we will move on to our consent agenda. We have, I didn't want to consent to it. There's nobody here to remove anything. If not, we will look for a motion. Like I said, item one through three, I'm just.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Brown and a second by Mayor Proton Raymond to accept your consent. Over the road, please.
Councilman Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hope.
Four.
Councilman Kellum. Four. Councilman Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Proton Raymond. Four.
Okay, uh, those four and fives have been reviewed by vote, and we will go to items for action. That's item number six, that is reviewed and approved in March. Thirty-first strategic planning retreat. Minutes and the draft. Also, we all were there and had a good afternoon or a good day, I should say. With Mr. Thomas as our moderator and gonna open the floor up to the. Five, do you wanna start off, or can we go to your council, council? Over there for places, have you had a seat? Council, do you have anyone to comment on, or would you rather Mr. or I run it through, then we can talk? Don't have a question?
Like many, like I've had the pleasure of reading several of the strategic planning retreats. I think this is probably one of the best ones. I think the format of it was much more collaborative. The council was much more engaged in the blue sky section. Uh, many projects were discussed. Um, they kind of got pushed and pulled and some maybe a little further down the road and some of them sooner. Uh, the ideas that the council were putting in, uh, by Doug Thomas, who did a terrific job and went through the SWOT analysis. Uh, several items were added by city council for that. When we approved this document, we're approving all of this, so it includes the SWOT analysis. Uh, the next items that are included are the the vision, uh, mission. And the vision, particularly, I want to speak about that. The vision statement was reproduced from the last time it was modified, and I want to say that was two years ago. We did a few small tweaks to the vision statement a couple of years ago. But interestingly, one of the items that was proposed at this retreat was that the vision session began again. Because it's been some ten or twelve years since we've had this, so. We all agree to leave the vision statement as it is because we're going to go back out to the public and ask them what that vision should be, so that's why that didn't change. Um, it will very likely change when we do have our vision sessions with the community. Moving on past that, um, the mission statement was tweaked a little bit. Um, you can see they, on page nine of the, we, the item, um, mission statement where the, where it's in orange or red. I can't really tell the color, but I think it's red. Those are the changes that we added. Um, then we went to the organizational values. There were a couple tweaks made in the organizational value statements. Then Doug Thomas introducing this is the first time ever for the concept of pillars, proposed strategic plan pillars. And this is an important strategic planning tool that we want to continue using because there are several aspects to any strategic plan, but when you can, when you categorize an item in a plan as under this particular pillar or that particular pillar. We agree that all these pillars are important. It's easier to categorize individual ideas or concepts or projects in the future when you say this supports this pillar. This supports that pillar, council agrees, so. Council approve these pillars or will approve these pillars in this document tonight unless amended. So then the next logical thing that Doug Thomas did was he put all of the projects into these pillars. And now, as you go over to page fifteen of this item. So we've got five pillars, and there are the multimodal pillar, sense of place pillar, sustainability, community engagement, and economic vitality and development pillar. Then what he did was he took all the projects and he sent them to the city council members individually in a, in a scoring tally sheet for city council members to get a brief description of what each one was and then put a vote for, uh, for this project or that project. And those, they had, each, each city council had five votes. So they could put a checkmark next to five different things. Once they were finished with that, all those tally sheets came back to Doug Thomas, Doug Thomas then, uh, built this report based on that. He grouped them in order of the number of votes they received. And they're, they're shown here on page fifteen of this item in their respective column categories, or I should say, category categories, with the number of votes they got. The reason he put the number of votes there was to show how strongly council felt about this project or that project. Now, we all acknowledge, and I know we spoke, each one of us spoke individually about this, that there are projects that we know are gonna have to happen anyways. Why should I waste a vote on this? And, and that's why some projects didn't get any votes. So we, we should go through all of these, and I'll read through them quickly. And what you can do, or offend, is just say, I agree with this, or I disagree with that, and I'd like to change it to this. So the next thing I want to talk about is the, the timeframe of these projects. There are short-term projects that are in green. There are intermediate term that are in orange. And then the rest of them are considered long-term, which are. The first one in the multimodal pillar is the Presidential Streets Master Plan. This received five votes, so all five council members voted for this. It's in green, and that means it's a short-term plan. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's going to be to a consultant to put together an overarching plan for the Presidential Streets Neighborhood Plan. That's definitely gonna make it into this next year's budget. The next items are the West Central and Thurm Boulevard Street State Project and the Resiliency Action Plan. They each got a vote. They're considered each intermediate term, and I think that's appropriate because Thurm Boulevard Street State Project is more likely to be pushed out into the next few-year horizon as opposed to this next year for funding purposes. That works nicely for our purposes. And the Resiliency Action Plan, that works nicely too, because that's actually a, a long-term evolving document. So I'm, I'm fine with the way that's worded. And one item under the Resiliency Action Plan for the multimodal pillar is the Canaro Beach Boulevard Bike Lane Edition of thirty-five thousand dollars. So we're gonna propose that, put that into the budget this year. Um, and we'll see where that lands. The next two in there are long-term. And the first one is the FDOT Initiative. FDOT, as you all know, is not a roadway, but certainly they're interested in hearing what we have to say about it. We've been opining on it for years. They'll have a, a workshop, a public workshop coming up soon here to talk about their proposed roundabout at the intersection of North Atlantic and, uh, A one A, that's about Boulevard. From that project, which is totally funded for construction, there's another project north on A way from there to George King Boulevard, which is design funded. In other words, they have the money to do the design, and they're working on the design. But it's not construction funded, which means they don't have the money to build it or buy all the property that's needed for that. But they want to present both of those projects, the Ramada and the Northern Project, in one meeting for the public. And I understand it's gonna be in a few months, maybe September timeframe for that. So this is a priority of ours, but it's really driven by DOT. And there's gonna be public meeting coming in the near future about that. So appropriately, we'll launch the strategic plan in long-term. The next one is the Central Boulevard Street State. This is the section from past, not Boulevard, Ridgewood. Council indicated that they were willing to push that down the road just a little bit. I think we're all feeling the, the opportunity to jump on the Presidential Streets Neighborhood Plan is probably more of a priority right now than that. So with that, we're gonna move to the Sense of Place pillar. And the first one there, receiving two votes, was Shoredown Park Acquisition and Redevelopment. It's one point five million. Obviously, you can't put that, uh, money to use until, you know, we actually have Shoredown Park. Uh, City Attorney and I have corresponded with, with the county, um, as we gave them our last draft version a few months ago. You know, Anthony contacted them a week or two ago, but I said, where are they? And they promised they'd get back to us with a response soon. So the ball is firmly in the county's court right now, and with Shoredown Park, I think we'll wait for response from them. Once that goes through, we're gonna be pushing forward the, uh, the improvement of that park immediately. So that, that one is, uh, based on the county's, uh, action. The next items underneath that, the next six or so items are intermediate term, but they're actually, some of them are gonna be shorter term. Veterans Park, four hundred and ten thousand, we're gonna put into the budget for this, uh, next year. Currently, that's being, that's under design. We just got the, the survey completed this week. So, um, we'll be looking at preliminary designs approximately when?
Uh, hopefully, in a month.
Those will go to, to the public for comment before they, uh, come to an official council meeting. The next one is the Canaro City Park. This is the multi-generation facility, which of course is under construction now. Then you've got the Cape Center, which will immediately follow that. It's still planning to start around October first. The promenade is building to the south of us here. Uh, we have ordered a, um, appraisal for that. It should be here tomorrow day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we will begin negotiations with the property owner for the purchase of that building. All I got is the Sense of Variety, I'm trying to get a conjunction with A one A. This is the proposed chicane where the roads go out around, um, center area and who to have, according to DOT. Some sort of a placemaking thing there. I don't know if that's a statue of Rocky Reynolds or what it is, but something really cool. Uh, the next one is a sense, or idea of possible acquisition of the parcel south of Blacker Park. Dave has been in touch with the owner representative. Uh, the owner representative is trying to get a price for that. We can, so I've heard it as of today, they're trying, we're, we're trying to get information on that. Turning to page, page sixteen, we've got the Blacker mediation options. This is a possible expansion of the CRA property acquisition and aggregation program. Um, I know I've spoken at Blackwood Beach Council member about this. This is something that CRA typically do. It's a very common thing for a CRA to purchase a blighted, or I call a tired property. Perhaps one that's under market rents, or it's just not getting utilized, and it's just getting old. We would own that property, take that building down, and then make that property available for sale for the costs that we should have into it. Then when that next property when it buys it, goes back on tax rolls and just redeveloping something that is actually, has just replaced the light. And now is generating more and more tax revenue for the city and CRA. So you do that in a few strategic areas where you can aggregate a couple lots, you can multiply that impact. The next one is the Civic Scenery Program, the two thousand dollars per art installations, the sculpture, uh, project that we are proposing, for ten thousand dollars funded in this next fiscal year. Our plan there is to have this, uh, on a stagnant program where we're not replacing every piece of work installed every, I mean, all of them at the same time, every two or three years, so we'll stack that up. And we'll see how that evolves over the years as that program continues to be funded and artists get involved, and I really think that's gonna make a name for itself in the city of Canaro as something really unique in the city, very cool. Next one is the Town Center. This is within the Economic Opportunity Overlay District. It was talked about during the strategic planning retreat as, um, do we keep it? Do we, do we get rid of it? Do we change somehow we're interacting with it? And I think, at least my take on it was, let's, let's see how this plays out with the, um, revisioning. And this should certainly come into the conversation of the revisioning. And see what the citizens want for this area. There is been talk on and off with certain property owners, some arts property owners along that stretch with, with the Boulevard. Some deals have fallen through. Nothing really has materialized, but we're always hopeful that one of those properties is going to be bought and turned into something exactly what we want in the town center. So that should be happening anytime too. Next up for that is supported the Children's Theater, Constable Promenade, and then Gila Development. I, I confirmed with, uh, Councilmember Raymond, who brought this one up, that we're not talking about the construction of a facility. We're talking about a program, supporting a program for children's theater that could take place anywhere really in the theater, in the city, where we have sort of, sort of the infrastructure to do that. I think that's a great thing. It doesn't necessarily touch the budget, but it's something that the staff knows this is the priority of this council if this plan is approved. So we will help assist with that. That wraps up that pillar. The next pillar on page sixteen is the Sustainability Pillar. Item number one on that is the Sanitary Sewer Infrastructure GIS mapping inspection. That's a hundred thousand dollar billers annually over the next five years. We have to put that in the budget because it's a DDP mandate. It did get a couple votes, and that's important, but, um, we have to do this. We're going to do this. The nice thing about the GIS mapping is we've got a very talented individual and staff that's very capable of helping us integrate this GIS. But we also have some consultants that are on our CCNA bench already that have GIS capabilities that we can hire this out for large hall projects. So I think we're really well positioned to begin this GIS program. So we'll, we'll see that appear in the budget this year. Next item is the, uh, FLOM Infund, Distinct Drummill Replacements, nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's our budget project instead of, anyways. Longway Road, Estuary Park, four hundred forty thousand. This will be the final phase. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, that's the final phase. Longway, Estuary Park, wrapping that up and putting the boardwalk through there. Uh, the WR, which, Water Recovery Facility Data System, again, this is, as funded, required, uh, uh, dates budgeted. Then we've got the Resiliency Action Plan. Now, on the Resiliency Action Plan, there's always gonna be something every year, I think, going on with this, and that's exciting. That Resiliency Action Plan, which is very close to being presented for final adoption by city council, has just gone through a, a public meeting or two. But we're, we're ready to hit the ground running with these things, and there's six of them here that we're gonna propose into this budget. The Public Works Services Administration Building Solar Array, eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. The Green Shield Initiative, uh, native planting project that will arm up the shoreline, thirty-five hundred dollars. The seal planting, continue that. We're just moving that seal planting under a resiliency item. We're gonna do that anyways. Last year, we doubled it to twenty thousand seals. Had no problem planting twenty thousand seals, so I'll stay with that this year. That's three to five thousand dollars. Then the solar streetlight conversion continuation, fifty-eight thousand dollars. This was an item that the city council heard a few months back where we want to replace the older technology solar lights with some newer technology solar lights. In fact, to that point, we will be bringing a solar light donation agenda item to the city council. I, I expect it will be here in June next month where we will see if there's another city we do that we've actually identified another city that's interested in taking the old solar lights. My role is that, um, we don't, we don't donate any solar lights that are perfectly good working order. I, I don't think we want to do that. The work, the ones that are, that are in need of some TLC. Those are gonna be the ones that are replaced first anyways. So they're sitting in the yard right now. They're gonna have to be moved out of there soon. We would donate those ones first that need, that need to work. Because we, we recognize we're giving away an asset we paid money for. So when you get this item next month, you're gonna get the bullet points about how much money we've got into these solar lights and to make an informed decision. The next one is the, uh, VCSO Building Solar Array for ninety-four thousand. That's on Sheriff's Department. And the multi-generation facility battery storage system, this is a really cool thing that I can't believe the day is here that we can actually potentially power a building from batteries. But they will be solar charged batteries and make that building more resilient. Finally, on that, uh, this was tagged as a purple, which means long range, but that's not really accurate because it's gonna have to happen soon. And that's the sodium bisulfate. That's the, that's a system at the Public Works Facilities, part of the processing of the, uh, the water recognition process. Sixty-five thousand dollars is gonna be turned into a new state-of-the-art processing, um, temple. And what's the process called, Jim?
It's, it's the de-claration.
De-claration, yes. So we're gonna put that into this next year's budget. Moving on to the Community Engagement pillar, we have a revisioning project, got two votes. That's gonna be happening next year. We've already spoken about that. Then finally, the Economic Vitality and Development, that'll be our two items. They're both tagged as intermediate term. I think that's appropriate. Uh, one of them is the Oak Lane paving and stormwater project. Um, we've talked on and off over the last several years, but, uh, should we or should we not pave that road? There's been, uh, business owner interest. There's been resident owner disinterest. We've heard back and forth. There are problems to be solved out there. There, there are community issues that I think the community that, that's out there can rally around and, and see the, the need for this. The city's going to put money towards that. But we want to make sure that this is what the residents and the business owner can agree to. Um, and Councilmember Kellum has agreed to, to meet. Um, and council member Kellum has agreed to, to meet with that group. We'll certainly assist her with staff and some information. So that what she does, uh, we'll hopefully get a very good result from that, from that meeting. And we'll report back to the council on that. And I thank council member Kellum for that, for bringing us to that. Last thing, the development of metrics and key performance indicators for municipal operations. Um, the comments suggested before the benchmarking portion membership. So key performance indicators will be determined. Uh, what are those areas that we, the council wants to see measured with key performance indicators? We would develop a program um based around uh those desires. First of all, we'd see what's out there. And then um we would bring back reports to the council's office about what's out there. Now, the, the information that could be gained from, from these types of metrics would be numbers based, uh, crunchable numbers. If you can compare services, municipal services with previous months, with other cities and just a benchmark of how you, however you're doing. So uh with all that, what I would ask the city council to do is talk about any of these things in page fifteen, sixteen about. What you like, what you don't like, what you want to see colored coded differently, um, what you want to see stripping, what you want to see added. Any of that, uh, it's your, it's your document to edit as you see fit. And then once, uh, there's consensus on what that final edit looks like, I would like to ask the city council to. Move for approval of the strategic planning minutes and the strategic planning report as amended. Once that's approved, that becomes our strategic plan going into the future and it helps us know exactly what you want to see put into this budget. And that's all I have there.
Thank you, Todd. Um, I'm sure you hear what we're here to do and. We've been, um, you're in, you're ready for us to do this.
Yep, I'll, I'll go. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Um, overall, I think this is fantastic. Um, I don't have any, any comments that would. Understand this is kind of an evolving process. It's going to flow into the budget and everything I see. Um, you know, we talked about and I thought the process was um very logical to put it out to not only get a comprehensive list. Um, based on staff, council, and ultimately the citizens, uh, but then to go back through and prioritize. Um, what, what each of us think is important and um I think it represents what would really help improve the city. Um, and the, the fact that some of them are already happening like you know, it kind of, you know, makes it. Being able to asterisk those helps us see really what will be new, but um I don't. I don't have any, any i- issues. I look forward to reviewing these when they get to the budget and. And as always, getting a better handle on the costs, but I think this is a good plan just overall the strategic planning. Um, just like you said, Todd, I think the council agrees. I felt very good walking out and this is kind of a. The deliverable, the product of what we were able to accomplish. So, Mr. Merrick, that's all I have. No, no, no issues. Thank you.
Just want to thank Todd for what made a selection from the, the nominee for that strategic plan. I think it went real well and the. Next job was done. I think the citizens can be proud and also the council, also the staff. I'm in total agreement with everything we've done. I think we are very transparent in what we've done so that citizens can see what the money is going to be going for. We hope to propose in the near future and that's all.
Well, great.
I'd like to say thank you also. I think that's a great job. Um, I had a few concerns. I was a little confused because of the projects that we've already had going on. I also uh have a question about developing a metric system for um city staff incentives. I think that this could be problematic. I worry about the staff getting too much busy work and do we really need this? I think that um Todd and Melinda and staff has done a great job hiring professionals in each area. And I think because of this, they, most of the people here on staff have a lot of training. They have all. Very high certifications for their particular job. And um I feel that that might be unnecessary. I would like to see that struck. I don't think that we need that at all. I think we already have. Our guide with the international maintenance that we have done and with the magistrate. So I think that that would cover much of this. I don't think we want to do this at the metrics. I think it could be threatening and intimidating for some of our staff members and. That's it. Thank you.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you supported it. You supported us.
Of course.
I supported you.
Of course.
But you're there. I don't know. Did you vote for anything?
Um, I, I think I did and I, I don't think that. Okay, I, I think I need to talk to Todd about this when I live with him and I think um it's more of. When people come to us on the street and say. You know, when people come up to us and, and want questions about what's happening at city hall, if we could pull up this information and give it back to them. Um, you know, like just an example of building permits or, you know, we had talked about this at the last meeting, how long it takes for it to turn around or this or that. I think it's just something good to help us support the staff to the citizens of the city. I don't think it's um detrimental. I mean, I would know more about that than, than I would, but I, I, I think that that's where it's coming from. Just a, a benchmark on, okay, well, this is, uh, you know, I asked Todd for water bills. I had people asking me about water bills and he took the time to. Find out, you know, the other cities, um, can our water bill and how much water it is. And I think the answer to people that are saying promenade bills are ridiculous. So I just think it's a, a good tool for the um. For this, for us, for the staff, when they can just pull up something and say, this is, you know, this is how it really feels.
It's kind of common. This is, my problem with it is I think that each time the staff has to look at permanent, it's an individual case. There are different kinds of things to look at it, but it's just not one size fits all. That's, that's my problem with this. One might take twenty minutes and one might take twenty days. So that's where I would have an issue with this because if you, as a council member, might say, okay, that should take ten days. And if it doesn't take ten days, that's a problem. There, we have conflict. So I think this could be good and bad.
Yeah, I just, I think it was brought up and I think Council Morrison brought it up as a tool for us to. Um, support the staff and, you know, make an instrument to let us help them. I don't know if I'm saying it right, you know, like just to defend the city when you hear, have complaints. You could go somewhere and say, okay, let me report this metric or whatever and show it to the people. I don't think it's used against the staff. We, we have a great staff. They're all very knowledgeable. And very good at what they do. It's just about, um, that's what I'm thinking.
And Mr. Merrick, and I can comment too because I was unsure. I was, I think, I, I was. I thought it was something that was worth considering. Yes, I don't know. It was my item. You need somebody at all and I.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Did I vote for it? I think I did. Um.
Not supportive.
Yeah, no, I understand. And, and what I can do, I think that um. It, it, I think the old, you know, it's how, how you quantify a successful city. And getting back to the numbers that are important to, to Todd on behalf of the administration. There's numbers every day that I think are important to him and. That are important to this council. Um, Councilmember Kellum shared one example of permitting times. We know that if people don't have to wait a long time for their permits, that's good. Um, we also know that citizens might be complaining about permit time and, you know, they're not being reasonable. And so I think that that example is, is a really good one because we'll say, hey, it's been. Um, one week and I haven't got my permit. Well, um, most cities average three weeks. And our city averages two weeks. We're better than most cities and we're right on track actually. So this whole type for another week in our staff, um, takes a lot of pride in those metrics. I do agree with you, Mayor Burgeon Raymond, that it could get overwhelming if there's too many metrics. I think that, that if we, if you would allow me or, or. I can send you uh something that I was reading. I think it comes from the organization that. I might have got some of his training, the International City Communities Association. They've got the best practices, metrics. And I think if Todd wanted to go in and lead what metrics, maybe just one metric for every department that's most important to him. That would be a good start. Um, and, and, and be able to, to go down every department and say. Um, our fire department, the metric we value is response times. And I think Canaveral's got a really good response time. Same thing with our, 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 our sheriff's department. Maybe there is a different metric there. Maybe it's permitting for our building department. Maybe it's overall customer satisfaction, more qualitative, but we can put a metric on it. We do, you know, a survey once a year on how people are happy on a scale one to five with our leisure services, right? The, this is, that was the idea is to say, what are the numbers that we value as a city? Um, not too many because I agree that, you know, it's, it, if it can't be measured, it can't be measured. Or no, no, it can't be measured, it can't be managed. And I do think our. Our staff is professional and he is going to do a very good job of managing in, in Brinkway. I think they already have metrics that are important to them. And, and what I wanted to do was to say, maybe if Todd can think. On what metrics would be important to the citizens of Cape Canaveral. Um, he could share those with this council and evolve it over time if he doesn't have them today or just needs time to think about them. Over the coming months, years, whenever we get to it and say, hey, here are the five numbers that I think citizens should be really proud of in Cape Canaveral. Share that with council and then, you know, every year we, we look under the hood and we try to either, you know, meet them or beat them. And or, you know, depending on other cities, maybe we internally compare how we're doing to other cities, but. Um, I think it is a balance to not overwhelm uh analysis paralysis, too much data, too much work. You're spending all your time putting and reporting together. I think that would be actually counterproductive to what we want to do. But even if it was just at the end of the year, we quietly kind of kept track of the metric in each department. And then the state of the city report, we came out and said, hey, here's a number that, that we should, that we should celebrate and be proud of. That would be a great start. That was why I voted for it. And, and you have seen other cities. Um, taken to a whole nother level, I think with a lot bigger budgets than Cape Canaveral. Um, where they, you know, you go online and they've got the whole city dashboard and you can see all these numbers and the budget and you can balance the budget, but um. Yes, a formative version of that, something simple, something not intimidating, something that I think we could all get behind and keep our eye on. Not being an anchor or an, an impedant to what this administration is trying to do. So. That was my thoughts, Mr. Merrick. Thank you.
Well, I think it's probably, I don't know, I, I could go either way with it, but. I would think it'd be something that maybe the staff feel like they would. Get a, a, just such a use out of it and it wouldn't be an impediment to you keeping. Moving forward with what we're doing. I don't have a problem with it, but it's going to be an impediment to you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, some input on this. Um. Mickey's request through the city manager to finance, you know, this is a good, a lot of these things happen naturally. So when Mickey requested the utility study, it took my staff just because of response time from other cities and comparing apples to oranges. It took my staff up three weeks to put that study together. So it was apples, oranges, it made sense. So it wasn't something that could just be done in a couple of days because we had written down cities. And you want to go back to cities and say, explain your categories. So it, it was, it was very detailed. But you know, these things kind of happen naturally. Now, not to confuse the issue with public records requests, but of course on the public records requests. That's happening based on information requests. It could also turn into be a metric. Well, those things happen naturally also. So um, and with the state of the city, what happens each year? Is there are uh things that we set up, by the way, which our state of the city report, I think is the best it's ever been, right? Kudos to Molly and everybody else who, you know, put that all together, kind of whatever I'm missing. But that, that draws with the revenues and expenditures, you know, which could be. Is backed up in the budget and in the audits, but it's brought together specifically to show the public. You know, exactly what happened cumulatively for the year. So my only point is Mickey, that, that request you had. And that's a perfect example of with Wes, uh, Council Morrison saying about, you know. You know, paralysis, snails, we use so much, but when you did, it took about three weeks, but hey, this is a very good study and, and it was good. So, so um a lot of these things happen naturally to determine what a metric could occur on a regular basis. I know Council Morrison, you know, has asked in the past about um the licensing for the city. Other council members have asked for similar things and these are things we do that takes some time. Some things don't take as much time. Uh, so then I would go to the city manager and, and say, uh, Todd, and you know, what. Aside from things happening naturally and public records was, what would we look at for each department? That would, that would be valuable. So I hope that they have a little perspective to what we're talking about.
John, when you're doing this comparison, to me, there's only a couple of cities that would fall into the same uh criteria as. As Cape Canaveral, probably satellite, probably Cocoa Beach. When you start adding all these other cities, I mean, they're totally different. Our city, so where you add no cities into your, your figures or your puzzle and you probably shouldn't just, I can only think of maybe three cities in the bar town that you would compare. Um, apples to.
Yeah, it was, it was very, it was a very detailed report and there's multi-rates in cities like Melanor and the Palm Bay. But we drew out apples to apples to get the best, you know, indication, you know, safe for safe family home and those things.
And now people say to me, our water bills are ridiculous. I go, oh, they're not.
Mayor, if I could, Mayor, I'm thinking after this, this good discussion, I think I have a better idea perhaps where the council is on this item. I think what we could do is um with, with my expanding role within ICMA and the FCCMA and the professional opportunities developed and I've been developing my own knowledge with. I'll be looking for uh best practices and I think that's what we're looking for. What are best practices? And I think Councilmember Morrison hit on it really well. What are the things that are important to the community to have that, have a licensed number? So when they're talking with people, those things. So here's how I'm hearing it, that um, I'll keep my eyes open. If, if the council proves. um, I'll keep my eyes open. If if the council approves this item, I'll keep my eyes open for those key performance indicators. And we're not talking about dozens. We're talking about a select few that are important to the community. And it may just be, as we talk about, per department. And so I would, um, if this gets approved, what I would look for as a start to this is that in that sort of, in the annual report, something, a key performance indicator in each department that we feel believes in our professional experience is a good number or good metric for the public to see from that department. I don't think that's too difficult task to ask to, would that have been the annual report and can start there with this? Um, and that may, that may be a solid area. Yeah, I think so. There's going to be questions asked, why? Yeah, I think more of the the custom inquiry, um, several council members have come to us. I, I'm always, of course, you know, welcome to talking to the department directors. If you have a specific question, somebody's asked me about this and you can, Councilmember Kellum, your example is a perfect one. People are saying it's taking so long for the building permit. Can you give me some information? Who we got the information? We can still do that, of course. If there's a specific community issue that you're sensitive to, bring it to us, we want to hear about it, but I think as far as strategic planning uh reports, we're talking about um a key performance indicator that would go into the annual report more for each department as a rule. That's the way, that's the way I hear it.
That's what was going to be one of the things that they did in the discussion, how I'm going to put the to you more, was to see if there are people, the departments do have an issue that they be their number one.
Yeah, because we could use it for grabbing rights too.
That, I think that's acceptable. My concern was that, you know, it wouldn't be a day by day or a week by week type of a method. That, so now that um, we've talked about this.
They would want to change that issue later on.
It's a good discussion.
It's a good discussion. Thank you for having the discussion. I think I understand what the council is on this.
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of things I wanted to clarify. Um, I thought this was amazing. I thought it was really, really interesting and and good and we all had our say and there was a couple of things in the uh blue sky strategic projects in the uh, if I can leave a magic one.
What they put?
Um, on page twelve, there's protecting national uh natural school amenities and prioritizing the eastern end portions of the presidential streets. And then our number one in the modular quarters is enhanced handicap each access component. Does that also include, I know there was discussions about bathrooms possibly on every other street we grew up. Is that included? And it's because it's not really written out there.
Yeah, and and there were so many things discussed. Doug Thomas had some way to incorporate some of these under larger umbrellas. So the ones you mentioned fall well within the presidential streets master plan. Because that incorporates the pre-changed streets and natural amenities there. And yeah, we don't know what they're going to look like, but that's, that's on purpose right now. We want the community to decide what the presidential streets we develop, that's going to look like.
And that's going to be all of the revision.
No, that's a separate budget I have for the presidential streets neighborhood master plan. That's, that's happening separate of the revision plan.
Right, but I mean, in the revision plan, that will be brought to the city.
Oh, yeah, they'll have an update on it. They'll understand where we are and um hopefully they'll support it as much as we also.
And then my other question was um, purchasing Wolfman lands. And then we have the possible uh purchase of the I have park, Mexico River Park. Does that include, I know we talked about the strategic planning about the staff doing a survey through the city to see where other little pieces, parcels of land that are really not buildable, that the city could purchase. Um, I know we talked about that. Is that anything to do with Van McPark or is that helping else?
Well, the first was South of Way and the park was a standalone item on here to look into uh purchasing that separately. Those were all opportunity based. There's not a lot of them. I can tell you there's not a lot. You, you see, if you look on the property praiser and you just click around, we all have done for years, looking at different properties. There are very few tiny little unusable parcels. When the city areas were planted, they were mostly planted and developed full lots. Ninety-three, four percent of that been built out. If you see something tiny, it's probably there's a good chance there's a lift station there or maybe the city already owns it anyway, you know, reserved for a utility of some sort. Um, this, this piece south of Way Park is weak and that is, I wouldn't call it tiny.
No.
But I would call it small.
It's like a wedge shape.
Not, not really usable. So over the years, there's not been the development of a lot of unusable properties. This one is a relic from when North Atlantic Avenue cut through and it's just shaped the way that it was. I don't think you're going to see a whole lot of those, but it's an issue of questions specifically. No, we're not scouring for those, but I would think we would generally be aware of them as, as more familiar with this website.
Okay. And then other than that, I think the revision project is really important because the cities changed. People have changed. We need a new vision. And um, other than that, I think it's pretty, I really enjoyed this session and um, I thought, oh, it was really interesting and we learned a lot about each other and our city.
Yes, well, it's going to be a long streak, you're true.
Yeah, sometimes, I think mine.
Did you have anything on Rebecca?
Yeah, I think I, I think I think I find this um, I think it was well done, that's for sure. I think that Doug was a, a good moderator. Worked out very well.
I disagree with this, nor would I close this.
As, as far as the premier beach, uh, that was part of this big sky and I was looking at that and the more I think about it, the more I see people coming from Melbourne, Tidusville, all over the place. And the reason why they're coming to Cape Canaveral is because of the Moby Mats. They love the Moby Mats. And um, I'm just wondering how we're going to do that to more of our beach apps.
Yeah, my, my thought is that as we do this presidential streets neighborhood plan, and if we do the street by street, water by water, how will we decide to dice it up for projects? That when that project touches that boardwalk, that beach crossover, we make it fully A D X compliant, reconstructed. And in in that case, when we have a fully A D X compliant, if we can, D E P premises, we definitely want to evaluate the inclusion of another Moby Mat there.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, just a couple more. I want to go to the, yeah, the Moby Mats. I think you brought up a hundred percent agree. I mean, you want to have the best beach entrances in this state and the country. And I, I see it's going to take time, but we have the potential to do that and and I'm, I'm really excited about that. I think that's why the president got all five votes on that one. So um, just one other comment, I think uh, something from Brown Brothers out and we all voted, but Mike didn't hear it and might miss it, but the um, coming into Cape Canaveral, welcome to Cape Canaveral and back to sign now, since that meeting. Where you can, you're all looking at it now. I know we've been doing, Mary, you've been doing it for years, but I think the answer we got was it can't happen as of today. But um, I just hope we don't give up on that. Rules get changed, things get changed, and unless the council does not want that, that's such prime real estate to epitomize a sense of arrival to this city. Um, and so that was it. Just more of an encouragement, don't give up on, in, if whatever rules need to be changed. Um, if we can help there or talk with them, um, there is and a bargain to be had, whatever it takes, that is something, I think that would be really cool. Um, and yeah, that was it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And real quick, Todd, um, I'm going to echo what Councilman Morrison said. When we had DOT, you said it coming in September. I, I don't know, you know, I just know it would push off a few months at Molly. You may know some more about that than I did when the DOT meeting is happening, I think. Did you publish something about that?
Can you repeat that, Todd? It was a little hard to hear.
Do you know when DOT wants to have the public meeting about the roundabout in the northern section of A one A?
The last that I was told, um, it was uh taken off the June calendar and they were going to push it back to fall so they could incorporate input on what I understood to be the northern segment.
Yeah, so no more specifics, specificity than fall.
Yeah, that's, the only specifics I saw was fall.
Thank you, thank you, Molly. Okay, what I was going to say, Todd, would be inappropriate maybe to bring that up. Maybe we can utilize their framework, um, structure when you come in northern Black Town. You know, they might say, hey, you can work out something where you can utilize it and have more of an entrance for our city. That's still my point. Yeah, and I understand exactly what you mean, the metal truss structure that overhangs the roadway. And I've certainly seen that on, uh, I believe it was seventeen ninety-two in Orlando. It says, city of Orlando. Um, alongside some of those bridges right there. Boy, how can they get that? We'd love to have something like that. And yes, we have been told, what we've been told is those are official, official sign of joint. It's basically the line you get. But I also hear with Councilmember Morrison the same is there may be strategic opportunities where you might be able to make margin, make something happen there. So we would certainly keep our eyes open for that.
Okay, well, I go to public participation. I don't have anything to add to this. I think we've been through I don't really disagree with. I think a lot of it is uh, a long been waiting and coming and it's finally here. With uh, I'm going to go ahead and open public participation. Molly, do you have anybody out there with hands raised?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, is anybody in? Tap, you have anything? Okay, then uh, we'll call for a motion. Does everybody step here please? Done? We'll call for a motion. To pass this as permission by us, which we didn't really do, but we talked about maybe.
Mayor, an inappropriate motion would be I move to approve the minutes and the draft strategic plan report as presented.
Sounds good.
You started voting there.
So moved.
I moved to for the minutes and draft.
That's good.
Okay, we have a motion to pass. The strategic plan, we retreat minutes and the draft as written. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brad?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilmember McCollum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Burton, Raymond?
Four.
Okay, well, well, it's well intended, please.
And Mayor, I had some options left up cause the results will be very gratifying.
Please, thank you. And thank you very much for all the seconds. Very forward to the meeting. Uh, reports. Who wants to start? It's Martin here.
I'm happy to, uh, just quick, uh, I'd want to say this in fact about Friday Fest. I know um, the drums are starting to beat with normal C F thing and that. Um, and I told them I'm going to get in trouble, but July might be the most reasonable, June probably not happening.
Yes, um, at the last council meeting, um, two council members requested that I report back in this council meeting with a report for what does the pandemic of COVID emergency orders look like for us? Fortunately, since then and the weeks since then, there have been some significant movements with the governor's office and also with CDC. As a result of that, um, the, the restrictions that I had placed on city facilities for masks have been removed. Uh, social distancing signs have been removed. They've been replaced with CDC recommendation signs all over the place. You've seen the, the governor's order where any uh emergency order that has uh restrictive mandates such as mask orders um, is set to sunset, um, come to light first. Fortunately, we didn't have anything restrictive in our emergency order. Um, so one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight was rescinding the emergency order and what I'd like to propose is that we bring that back to city council at the June fifteenth meeting. Uh, if that is approved, what it would do would definitely send a signal that we can have a Friday fest in July. And I've already told Gustavo to prepare for July, because it's the second, July second, Friday fest, in anticipation that we'll be going that way. So when we remove that emergency order, we, we, we not only signal that, but we also put it into certain things. One of them being the the flag, remember we put that in there for the duration of the, of the order? We also uh reduced building permit fees, application fees by fifty percent, several types of application fees by fifty percent. Um, we removed fees for Friday fest. Um, there are a host of things that will be presented in June. If council is agreeing to this, we'll, we'll show you everything that we're letting go of. We let this emergency work go. And I would recommend that we do that in June. I'd like to propose that we do that. I hope that answers the question of Friday fest and perhaps a lot more.
Doug, thank you. Um, yeah, that makes sense. You know, had we not have those those strings attached to the, the, the local um, ci- uh, city of state of emergency of the better flags, it'd be a lot easier to do it tonight if the council's well, but I understand getting all of that prepared and thinking about the timeline, having it in June and then by July, everything's clear. So um, thank you for, for clarifying that. Uh, just one other thing that was brought up, uh, might have been discussed in the past. Um, but outdoor volleyball, um, didn't plant the seed on having low cost posts on the beach where people could you know, be put up in that or bring it on that. That's been some discussed. That I think would be um, a good idea for the community. Just wanted to share it. And if it's possible, if it makes sense, largely administrative, you know, Gustavo worked through. It's a good idea. Fully trust staff will do it. Um, I think that's something that I, it's been brought up a couple of times and I, and I said I would ask. And that's it. Just thank, thanks for first responders, everyone, staff, I know. We're uh, we're just over a year. Since COVID hit, it's been stressful, but we got through it and I think we're, we're doing better than a lot of the the fears that we, we thought how it could have went. And so um, thank you, Todd, for all you're doing with this council. So I'm looking forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Right. Okay, last month we had the T D C advertising um meeting. And one of the things that always comes up is branding for the particular cities. And the past Cape Canaveral hasn't got the branding that they truly deserve. And what you see, as you see, um establishments in our city that are basically, they advertise their Cocoa Beach when they're actually Cape Canaveral. And that's something I'd like to see in the future that our businesses will will not jump on what I consider that they would use our city as a brand to advertise our own, whatever they're advertising. And that's one of the things that we talk about. And I was advised that Cape Canaveral is going to, we're going to do better as far as getting our, our own particular branding as far as T D C. Is, and as far as when the budget committee comes out, I will be advocating that I hope by then we work something on cherry down. And so there is a possibility that maybe we can get some of that money from the T D C to go ahead and, and um help us with additions that will be made for that particular endeavor. I want to thank the staff, everything they've done. Um, of course, our first responders. Hoping everybody have a joyous start to the summer. And I'm looking for better things and hopefully our city will move on. We're looking for a new start. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you get too far, I did have one thing. Sorry to jump on you, was the, with the the restrictions coming down in face map, the Plexi last, I just wanted to bring that up, but that's a good idea as well. a good idea as well.
You were covering the Plexiglas at the DIAS?
Yes.
Yeah, we left that in, um, in respect for the City Council, because this is your DIAS. It's really a council decision.
Okay.
Uh, I think, uh, I think the issue is vaccination. If everyone's vaccinated, I think that it's appropriate to take down the Plexiglas. And if that's not the case, then I don't think that it is appropriate at this time.
You're up. Is that what you have to say?
No, not at all. I had quite a bit today. First of all, I want to talk about the Space Coast League of Cities Board meeting that Zoom. We really did accomplish a lot. And one of the things, um, is we had Mr. Cairns, his pronunciation. And, uh, he's doing, he showed us the website and he showed us a video about the new branding and we are finally going to get it. It's port cadaver slash Cape Canaveral. And I saw it on TV tonight. And I was shocked. And they have, it's it's very clever. Uh, they have all of the cities mentioned, or many cities mentioned. And they have a rocket in the background. But it's very clever. So you'll be seeing it. I don't know what channel we had on. Probably it was our Channel Two NBC. And you'll see the new video and it it it's fast. So you're gonna have to see it more than once. But anyway, we had viewed that and the man talked, Mr. Cairns, I think. He's from the tourist store. Correct? The tourist store. So anyway, those things that are being done. And I'm very, very pleased about it. So it's not just Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach. And, uh, so I was really happy, you know, it's provided coming with Space Coast. It starts out Space Coast and then it goes to all the different cities. So anyway, be watching for that because I was impressed and I was depressed with this talk also. Um, really good, 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 good speaker. Anyway, this was a Zoom meeting. And, uh, we have decided that we're going to meet in person for June. And that's June 14th. And we are going to invite, um, all the elected officials and associates. And we're having it at Field of Dreams in West Melbourne. And then we're going on with the regular sequence. However, if one city doesn't want to host, any city could jump in and do that. So we need to, you know, be prepared if we decide that we want to host. Uh, if if another city cannot, I'm not sure. I think that each city will want to host. So not sure, but I'll find out more on the June 14th. Uh, on May 5th and May 7th, I went with Zach Icaults. I'm not a scientist. And, um, I spoke about sustainability and resiliency. And on the May 5th, when I went to the Audubon Society in Orlando, they had a big camera in front of my face. I think within eighty-five feet. And I was a little nervous at first, but I think that I did just fine. Anyway, so I did that on May 5th and we spoke about resiliency and sustainability. And again, on May 7th, and that is part of the East Central Florida Regional Resiliency Collaborative. And, um, on May 7th was the NPR, was with Amy Green from NPR. And, uh, people are now coming up saying, we heard you speaking on NPR. I said, you did? How did I sound? Anyway, they said you sounded like Angela. So anyway. Uh, I don't know if I'll ever get to hear that or see it, but it was an exciting thing to do and to talk about our city being a model. And, you know, trying to be a good example. And because we really do have to be prepared for the changes in our environment. And we are doing a lot. I forgot to tell you that the, for Space Coast League of Cities, the scholarship application is available now. If you know, it could be any high school graduate or college grad. Doesn't matter. Anyone just wanting to further their education, they could apply for the scholarship, but they need to be very careful and read it carefully when they see it on the Space Coast League of Cities website. Because you have to make sure that you do exactly what they tell you to do. Otherwise, the application will not be reviewed. At this point, we only have one a- one application. And we hope to give out the scholarship in June. So I would love to see a Cape Canaveral student, uh, receive it. But I think that is all I have to say. Oh, on June 22nd, I am going to be speaking at the Cocoa City Council meeting. I'm looking forward to that. And then I'll be talking about resiliency and sustainability. And I have to give a shout out to Zach Icaults. And I think that this council did a great job by saying, okay, we're going to go for this. This is something that we unanimously agreed upon. And, um, we made an investment by hiring a sustainability manager. And, um, I think it was really a smart move. So thank you for that. Thank you to the staff and everyone else.
Let me go back to your scholarship. How can they not post the scholarship, uh, information as scholarships apply?
Yes, and for for which degrees? Only certain degrees will qualify. And it has to do with city. It's a municipal type education, accounting, accounting, city government, um, leadership, organizational leadership is now major. Um, many different things. And oh, this year also, we're going to give, um, it for someone for a technical college. Because we feel that that really is something that we need to do. And I think that's a great thing. As we spoke about this and we made a decision. Yes, yes.
So it changed really a lot.
Yeah, I
It's a really small category, but they really hope to.
I'm very happy about that. And I've been on the scholarship committee. And I said, I did that at the university for the whole time I was at the university for twenty years. This is a very important point for me because I went to school only because of scholarship. Thank you.
Um, just a few things. I, um, attended the, uh, Space Coast TCO meeting and, um, brought back some of the issues. That's a very interesting meeting, very detailed and a lot of information, um, on the alter alternate. So, uh, it was, it was amazing to me. And I saw that, uh, Cape Canaveral's not on any of the top projects. We're down the road somewhere. Um, but it was very interesting. I enjoyed it. Um, uh, the other thing is I I like the volleyball. I think that would be really nice additions for beaches. Um, and as far as the peacocks, I know I lived here thirty years and there's not as many now as there used to be. I know they did thinning out projects. And I think maybe if the staff looked into places where we could thin them out or a company that does it or whatever, but I know there was one time years ago where they euthanized them and people were not happy about that. And, uh, you know, as part of our city, um, people that come through our neighborhood to see the peacocks are amazing. And, uh, you know, Key West has chickens. You're not handling that up. So I don't think we need to get rid of them totally, but no, thin thinned them out or kind of controlling them maybe would be a good idea. Um, other than that, um, I'd like to thank the staff for always doing a great job and, um,
I'd like to much to report. I've been really busy and I thought that the city for moving forward with a lot of issues that we've been dealing with. Especially in the building area, we've had a lot of problems. Slow build everything. Slow building department reactions. I think we, uh, I deal with them every day. I'm not bragging, really. Out of all, we deal with, we have probably the quickest service out there. No, I'm not. No, I I I thought it's just like this. But there's a procedure that you go through for a certain type of permit that I'd make, I don't have to go through all the same procedure that a a D- a GC does. I go through the certain procedures and it's been quick and I go to, oh, I get pretty good service out of all of them. But the procedures time where my permit may take a little longer because I got more involvement in it than just the normal little circle things. And I understand that. And I think a lot of the builders do, but then there's uh, I think, uh, a lot of the problem is self-inflicted. By not having a complete package file. If you're missing one piece of paper, it's gonna delay. A lot of guys forget notice of preventions. A lot of guys forget their lead weight. There's a lot of guys, you know, and it delays it. And and maybe that's one of the things that is indicative for, you know, other people would be notified in some way or shape or form. Even when they bring a package in before you even accept it, just check your issues all there. And then that relieves that. But most of it, I'd say ninety percent of it is self-inflicted. But it that's what I hear much when I listen to it. It's not, uh, it's not that they destroyed a pile. Uh, the only thing, I I have a couple of things that, one of them, we're gonna be hearing next month on our agenda. I do put that up as a constant update. As far as the, the bar, well, we
No, um, but people, many, but it's quite true. I'll be glad to speak to it though. Um, Mayor and staff were contacted by a local bar owner who has expressed interest in City of Cape Canaveral adopting twenty-four hour alcohol sales. So we'll be, um, putting that on the June agenda as a discussion item.
We want to seek some information from?
We we have requested that all the county's backup information and and I understand that we contacted Commissioner Lohr, who's also offered to to assist us there too. Uh, so we'll have benefit of all the staff information at the county level when we bring this to you at court discussion.
We want to seek some information for your own.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, there's issues with it. There should be the issues. I don't know. I got my my own with it. And I do have a letter that I'm going to be sending and sending to Governor DeSantis on House Bill four oh three, I think it was, or four, yeah, four oh three. Uh, and it'd be buried in the middle. I don't know if you all think about this, like, what's been happening with that, but I'm all for that. And I think that, uh, that needs to go away, the way it's written. So, uh, you can have a tire store across the street from somebody's garage. It always makes sense. But, um, that's basically the only thing I got. I got a couple of things coming up next month. I have to go to, but, uh, we can get it in the next month.
Uh, yes, sir. We'll make sure City Council gets a copy of the letter to the governor, the mayor from DeSantis. We'll have it tomorrow. As far as peacocks go, if you receive, um, general questions from residents about peacocks, please direct them to our website. We have a document there. It's got tips. It's got lessons learned. It's got Q and A and it's got our general policy and deal with key value. Uh, that's on the city website. Uh, I want to remind council that, uh, city manager performance evaluation form for you this Friday. And also coming up, uh, on the June agenda, we anticipate having, I don't know, renaming the multi-generational facility. As I discussed, the BCU multi-generational facility has not a name. It's a, it's a huge, we never really thought about a name until a couple of months ago when the contractor said, what's this sign going to read? And multi-generational facilities doesn't play out really well, I think. Down the, down the road, years become, people are gonna look at it and say, what does that mean? So I think we need a better name. So we're gonna be proposing, um, some to you. We've got a survey up to residents already. They're asking you to put your own career thought towards it for a resolution naming that facility next month. Or a discussion item next month, naming it following up by a resolution. And that's all, Mayor.
That, leave it at that. Just those? Do you have any, city government?
I have one final comment on the Plexiglas, Todd. Wouldn't you? I I don't think council, that would need to put the Plexiglas. But if I understand you, you're you're wanting to get the will of the council and with that, the you'll you'll be the one that would remove it?
Absolutely. It was, it was all, everything else was removed from city facilities when the CDC announcement came out. Which basically put the illness on people who have been vaccinated. They don't have the full access.
Okay.
So we left this here because we moved, um, respect for council. You may have different feelings about it personally. So we left it here for you, for the council to decide what to do. So
What do you, what do you need for hats?
Uh, a recommendation from the council.
Definitely. Is there a, do you want to step over to mine?
Okay, so if you want to vote, it's that's, we don't need to vote.
Well, there's a commerce system.
There's a commerce system about this. The integrity, I've been reading about this. The integrity is that if you have been vaccinated, no problem, you have to wear a mask. If you have not been vaccinated, then the integrity is that you're supposed to wear a mask. So that's the the whole issue because when we don't know, you know, we don't know and we cannot ask anybody about this. So I think that's the issue. It's it's an issue of integrity.
Those are the problems I have. Something that's typically you do it, they won't. So if you all care, I think we've been, I would like others that, just mine, right? You, are you the party?
If we're all We're all vaccinated. That we don't know.
Um. I don't want to be, tell you the lie.
I'm vaccinated, but I don't know that I will be able to assist. So that's the
You good? I'm getting a permit, yes.
So, all right, I'm gonna turn the council consensus to this. We're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Or we, well, we, you know, we're going to vote. We'll even know what we're going to vote.
We're going to remember this.
This is not my My worst. Okay, that's it. We're gone. We didn't draw. Thank you. Thank you, council.